...and then picked up early Monday. They're usually full Saturday.
Okay.
Early.
Sir?
They're usually full Saturday, early.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Turner, second by Mr. Dixon. Any comment? I guess one other comment I'd like to make here is this, and we will discuss this as we work through different things in the employee handbook, but I'd like to see, I mean Alan, you're the department head for this, I'd like you to have, I'd like him to have the power to do this without coming to council. It's Earth Day, it's dumpsters, it's overtime, it should be in his domain, so my only comment.
Little bit of comment. So these, Alan, once they're full, they're full. They're not
Yes.
They're not taken, and, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Another thing I want to ask about, and this is not, this is just a comment, I'd like to see it happen more than just on Earth Day. So if we could, we could sometimes do it, you know.
We could work that out with Republic to try to donate more dumpsters, or we just pay for some dumpsters once a year, and then they donate some once a year.
Yeah, and just, just do it more often.
They've done that in the last six months even. They, didn't they put two dumpsters up there off of forty-nine and MLK for a weekend?
I didn't, I don't know.
I think they did that for Frog Town.
They're, they've always been real good about that.
Yeah, maybe September-ish.
I'd like to see us working on scheduling it more.
Well, let's contact
These four are actually in the contract.
Yes, sir, exactly.
I think the renovation did that, to help clean up, they parked those dumpsters in.
Yeah. Okay, we had a first, we, or a motion, we had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And it caused quite a disturbance, and the, I think they'd been, the police had been called there for disturbances prior to that, so this just kind of aggravated it, but it, it sounds like that the travel trailers are in really bad shape, they're not livable, they're not hooked to utilities, but there are people living in them, and from what I understand, you know, they dumped their waste there in the neighborhood, and, you know, I've been looking to see, I know there's a zoning for that district, and they talk about, it is a residential district, zoned area, and it's within the boundaries, north of Baker Street, east of Haywood, west of Harrison, not west, hold on. And Haywood Street is a boundary, but it seems like there are a lot of travel trailers being used for residences all over town, and, and some are just parked in, you know, on the street that where they could be parked up by the house, and I just think it's something we really need to look at, and I know it's hard to get everybody on one page, well, you let them do it, why are you picking on me? So I think we need to draw a line somewhere and just have a media blitz and say, okay, this is the ordinance that will be enforced, if you're violating the ordinance, you have so many days to make it right and to move whatever it is it's violating, and then start taking action, you know, I mean, if y'all don't care about travel trailers being used as a residence, then let's get rid of the ordinance.
Yeah, so I, I think I'd like, I mean, we're already reviewing the ordinances, this is one of them. We said that we would go through the ordinances, clean them up, take some out that don't make sense, add some that do make sense, and then go through an enforcement period. We haven't really talked about how to do that enforcement period, but we did kind of say, hey, we're gonna look at it all, and we're gonna act as, as we reinvigorate the process. So I think this kind of falls under that process, it's just, like, I mean, I think, I know we went through the, the school bus, where the school bus did meet the criteria, well, so as not to pick on that person individually, we went and canvassed the city for other vehicles that were dormant, we'll call it, and I know that's not the right word, but, and we did that, and then those people felt picked on, so I guess my opinion is, this is gonna be part of the ordinances we're gonna review, we will have to address this as, as an entire city and say, we're gonna start enforcing this if, if the ordinance that we have in the ordinances today makes sense.
I understand what you're saying, but we have ordinance in place now, we should, we should make sure we fulfill what we have in, in place.
Hey, Chief, can you come to the mic, please?
Is there a way that
I just want to get a perspective on
The only, the only thing I don't want to, to do is, this has, in my opinion, this has nothing to do with the people at Jamison Street. This is, should be any RV that hasn't already had an approval, such as, we just recently approved one to, to live while they were building their house, and we gave them so many months to do that.
Six months?
Yeah, I think we ended up giving them four, because that's all they wanted. But those are the type things we, we can do, but, but it lives, that, that is in their property while they're building the house, but these, we know that we've got multiples that they're living in right now, and we need to, we need to address that.
So Chief, just your perspective, you're, you're, you're gonna know a lot of this
Right.
and even history, you know, before your chiefhood.
There are some things the ordinance does not clarify, how long can someone stay within one before it's residing?
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days, okay.
That's in the ordinance.
In the ordinance, and this is the one that was, is available online?
Yes, well, I, I don't know about that.
The one that I reviewed is the one online, it's because the books are loose leaf, I have, there's five different that I'm aware of, I have, I don't know when the last time we updated, so I go buy the one online.
Okay.
Mainly because when you come to town and you want to see a city ordinance, someone from outside moving in, they want to be a law-abiding citizen, they find it online, they do everything, hey, look, here it is, it's available to me, easily accessible, I don't know, it may, very well may be online. There is an issue with campers, trailers, that are throughout the town, there are some that are parked behind people's houses, that people are residing in, may or may not be residing in unless we poach up, catch them across the street, exiting the place in the middle of the night. We also do have some storage units that people may be residing in within town, again, we have to poach up, wait to see, catch them leaving, whatnot, but yeah, there is an issue, and we, it definitely does need to be addressed. As it continues, it does affect, I know from property value, residents around those very things, and on Jamison, there's actually three trailers, one, two, and three, and we do have issues with individuals staying there separate from them residing in that very thing, but we do have different issues from them. Any questions about?
Well, I think neighbors
Yes.
around that lot would appreciate us acting and not, you know, waiting, and doing something about it, evidently they dealt with it for a good while now.
There is, I know it, there's nothing that says you can't have a travel, travel trailer, I do know that people hook up to them, and when they hook up to them to keep the batteries and things alive and not depleted to where you have to replace all batteries. Our ordinance, I don't believe, addressed those at all. No?
As it should, because, I mean, I've got my RV parked on my slab there at my house, but I don't live in it.
And sometimes he lives in it.
Any longer, any longer, that's right, that's right.
But I did get approval to live in it, following building my house, and those are the type of things I think we, we need to still have that flexibility, but for long-term living in a, in a RV, it's just, it's not fair to the other people that we have ordinances, it says, if you build a single-story house, it has to be twelve hundred square feet, eight hundred square feet if it's a two-story, so why would we do that and allow other people to do this? And then go out to the county and live how they want to live.
I guess my only point, guys, is that this is one of those that's been unenforced for a number of years, we're purposely adding a second meeting every month to go through these ordinances and then ultimately reestablish the enforcement of all of them. I'm saying this is part of that. If we're gonna go nitpick through each one, we can do that, and, and each one we do will improve the citizens, but we dedicate ourselves to a process to go through all of them and then reestablish ordinances across the board. I don't know how long this ordinance has been not enforced, but it's probably been a while, Tina, right?
It has been enforced in certain locations.
Well, I think whatever ordinances we have in the book today ought to be enforced today.
Bingo.
And, and, and when we get to the discussion of the ordinances and we change it, well, then we change it, or don't, or do away with it, whatever.
I totally agree, because with the idea of what you're saying, Mayor, is that we might as well just throw away our ordinance book right now, until we get it corrected.
The number of ordinances that we're not enforcing, there's not much of a difference, there's really not.
It is if we decide we're gonna enforce it.
Understand, but we've already said we're gonna enforce it once we've been able to digest, change, modify, and improve what we have.
Okay.
I need to hear a motion.
I say, I'll make a motion that we live by the current ordinance and move forward.
Second.
Well, hold on, so seven Lima is about Jamison Street and other locations within the city limits. Can you refine your motion?
This, yeah, but this is, I'm talking about all the city.
For this particular ordinance?
For this ordinance.
Okay.
That's right.
I'm just trying to make sure you're making
Yes.
the proper motion to be able to be
And this, actually, this is, the ordinance that we have in our book right now is only zoning. That is not the only ordinance that applies to this situation.
So Tina, we've got an online and we've got a book.
Correct, and I do know what you're referring to, you're referring to, usually we use that fourteen day regarding the RV setup stations.
Yes.
Now, I, I remember.
Yeah, it's there.
Motion by Mr. Turner. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. That passes six oh. Seven Mike, consider discussing or approve the location, come on back, Tina, sorry, I tried to save you some steps. Consider discussing or approve the location of the placement of interior and exterior security cameras on the Jefferson Tourism and Visitors Center of the building. Folks, there is a handout with pictures for this one. Oh, you, Tina?
Okay, the pictures that y'all are presented with are based on the camera system that has been pre-approved for the Tourism and Visitors Center. We are looking at four interior cameras and eight exterior cameras, and they have been placed on this, on the picture handout here, in the best potential locations for, that may display any type of criminal activity, especially the large parking lots. They are high-definition cameras, and they will be able to zoom in and get high-quality footage from it.
The first page is the interior cameras that you proposed?
Yes, I believe it has just the layout on top of the video, or on top of the thing, I had Robert Nance, the individual, the company that's doing it, he, he developed that.
Sure.
If you look at just the right angle, that's kind of how generically it would be. So we do have one camera that'll be showing down the bathroom hallways, one that would be in the lobby, that will have front view of the main office and the boardroom, and two inside this very room that we're in, being able to get, locate both angles. Which, if someone was to make in, which we've had in the past, some juveniles enter the building, and I think it was equivalent to twenty or thirty thousand dollars worth of damage, they will enter these main areas, either the lobby or in here at some point.
So you're good with this?
Absolutely, this is all angles, especially the exterior, you'll be able to catch three sixty parking lot.
And Tina, just a reminder for council, we've already approved the dollars for this, this is just to approve the placement of.
This is just to approve the placement.
Any questions for Tina?
The, are these gonna be monitored twenty-four seven?
It's gonna be fully, as far as stored.
No, no, as, and where I'm going with this, when we have events inside here, are you gonna monitor during that event?
Well, if, we already have security on place during, usually when there's large events, especially when alcohol is involved, and we'll have access, certain individuals will have access to view it at any time from a remote location.
Okay.
But they'll be taped?
Oh, yes, it's gonna be stored in-house in, in a cloud away from
It will be in a cloud, it'll be off-site storage.
Yes, it'll be both in storage and off-site. Retained, I believe, on the your
It's in the cloud.
Thirty-day history for twelve cameras. So a whole month, which usually if we determine something has happened, something's broken, that's more than enough time to try to retrieve and
Correct.
save that footage.
Any questions for Tina?
I motion we approve.
Motion by Parsons.
If nobody has questions.
I'll second it.
Second by Dixon, any further discussion?
I'll only say that the only thing I'm concerned about is privacy whenever someone rents this building, and therefore I'll, I'll, I will be against the interior of the, this room right here. The other part, I have no problem with.
You mean like during events?
During events, I mean, it, that's, that's my only issue.
Access will very, very much be very limited, because I, I understand the concern of having too much access
Right.
to people viewing the camera system.
Yeah.
I completely understand that, especially with nonsense of having certain things just released because.
Yes.
I understand.
So if you behave yourself at events, Richard, we'd be okay. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, or me.
Any abstentions? Five, one, and zero. Thank you, Tina.
Yes.
Okay, seven Nana, consider discussing or approve the formation of a committee to review and/or propose policies for employee disciplinary actions for the city. Ted?
This came kind of alight, I've talked to several people about it, that especially in situations that have risen quite frequently since I've been on the committee, that some of our department heads don't really have, they don't think they have the ability to do things in certain situations that they really need to do before the council even sees it, it needs to be stopped immediately. So what I would suggest is that you allow me to head up a committee, I've already talked to Richard about it, and I've already talked to the department heads that are in our city right now, Chief, Melissa, and Alan, and they're, they're really kind of excited about this, so I just want the okay from the council to proceed with this, so I can bring forth to the council, Richard and I can bring forth some policies and some steps that these individuals can take on handling disciplinary actions with their employees. Any questions?
So you want to form a committee, committee made of councilmen?
Richard and I, and the three department heads.
Okay, so you're about to be out of office, who takes your place, is that voted by?
Richard, or whoever, hopefully we can have an answer for it before I get out here.
That was the whole goal, but it's
It's got close.
Tick, tick, tick.
One of the, and it, again, this is something that would probably, right now it's not currently addressed in the current handbook, and I know we're gonna rework that, but this is something that would become part of that as a policy, the main thing is, is that, so that if we get to the point that we have to dismiss an employee, we've gone through a, an established process and would make ourselves in much better light when we do that. We, we follow that for every employee, whether it's a worker out on the street, or whether it's the city administrator, which we don't have now, but, so that we follow that for every single one, and it's basically a progressive policy of this happens, this is what happens down the road, and who can call that, which would be the council. These things will all come back to the council.
Robin.
Well, regarding Ted being off the council, I mean, what keeps a citizen from being on a committee?
It doesn't.
So.
No, I think, I, I'm very supportive of the concept, but I'm more interested in, like, I, I would think we can give, I'd say the go-forward to go and create the structure and come back and propose the process to be implemented, but we're gonna, we're gonna want to know, you know, do we have citizens and councilmen on it, how, how does it rotate, you know, is it like a tourism board, or, I mean, you know what I'm saying, I mean, there's a lot of questions on
It's just fact-finding to give you the results.
Temporary committee.
And this is, yeah, this is a temporary committee, once, once we
This is it.
provide that to the council, and it's voted on, it's, it's done.
So obviously, Ted, this will linger past your tenure. You're, you're okay?
Miracles can happen.
Okay. Any questions for Ted? Do I hear a motion?
Sue move.
Sue move by Mr. Parsons.
I'll second.
Second by Robin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain because I'm on that point.
So three oh and two, no, four oh and two. Okay, thank you. Go to discussion items in section eight, first one up is eight Alpha, City Hall Security Measures, Chief? You should have sat on the front row.
That's why I came all jazzed up.
Right, I decided to dress comfortably. This was brought to council in the past regarding security measures for City Hall, and I would like to take lead on the security measures portion of City Hall as we move forward from here, and that's just my little bit of expertise in the subject matter, but when, just looking from the outside end, just not going too far, there's little things that I know that can be done. Let's talk about just simple changing of the locks, rekeying doors, or maybe even considering getting a code door lock, code door locks system put on the doors. Overall, code door locks saves money in the end, and you're also able to remove employees as they leave, easy to change out, and if for any reason something may happen, you can completely erase the system, change it out, while having to get a key locksmith here to change out all the locks. Other than that, security cameras is definitely a big one, there are, there is a camera in City Hall, but there can definitely be more. We are having a tremendous amount of visitors come to town, more so than usual, and sometimes it's during the end of the week, more traffic on the streets, if something was to happen, I'll be honest with you, I think it may be somebody not from town. We have a lot of tourism happening. Of course, I mean, those are my biggest concerns right now, the camera system and rekeying the doors, to also include maybe looking into rekeying this very building we're setting in. There's been issues in the past on who has keys, who has access to the keys, where are the keys at, and to be honest with you, even the police department, we have one key, and that's to get into the main door, and some of the exterior doors, and that's it, which on our end, we, we definitely want less keys when it comes to government buildings, because that's how we feel about the subject. Do I have any, like, feedback?
Good ideas.
Yeah, I
It's a great idea.
I think the keypad's are, because you can, you know who came in and, and when they came in.
Especially based on the system.
And especially with, I know events in here, we've had issues of, well, who's got the key, who doesn't. This way, if the event is given a temporary keypad that will last until noon the next day or whatever, so you can clean up, then after that, it's done.
Right. Do you prefer a keypad or one that swipes a card that
I like to prefer a keypad, just given the, I mean, I would be full-on with magnetic strips, you know.
I was thinking about a badge system for all the employees.
Right, but then we're, we're talking about a pretty expensive program.
Yeah, you're getting fairly expensive when you start doing it.
We've got keypads at our house, and they work just great.
Yes.
They're from your phone, you can set up a code per person, you can deactivate that in thirty seconds, someone gets locked out and calls, I mean, I could be in Baton Rouge and open up the front door.
Yeah.
Actually not, back door. Right, front door doesn't work.
Well, let's see.
I think that's, and, and the thing about that is, the keypad system, even down the road, if we built something else, we could reutilize that in the new building.
Right.
It's not something that would go away, and, which I do have an issue with spending a lot of money on that City Hall as it currently sits, but this is something that shouldn't be a, a big deal.
Right.
We can utilize it elsewhere.
And even a camera system, I mean, separate from the wiring
Right.
the cameras can be taken down, relocated to a different location, or, you know, just reinstall it after a remodel.
Right.
That's not on my
So you want to bring us some recommendations about that?
Yes, I would love to bring some quotes
And quotes, yeah.
Quotes to include this building, to include City Hall building with rekeying keypad ideas and things like that. I think that's, that would be fair, and of course, I know, again, this kind of enters into remodeling, but adding additional barriers when you do walk into City Hall, because it kind of is a straight shot all the way through the building. I mean, that's something to strongly consider if there's gonna be a remodel, I mean, that's not in my position to decide.
Yeah, I would, I would think, and we discussed this a couple council meetings ago, about getting some quotes for a variety of different things, I think we probably just need to get a couple of us, meet with Tina, and talk, you know, everything, everything from, you know, the doors, the locks, you know, some sort of wall system, just so we see what it might cost, because, Richard, you're right, I mean, Town Hall's not in great shape, and we hate to put a whole bunch of money into that, but at the same time, I mean, the safety of the employees is, is paramount beyond putting bad money into a bad building.
Mm-hmm. And with the camera system, just to touch on that again, I will get a, a quote from the same individual who's doing this center, I know we've talked about it very briefly last time, when it got approved, how it's a system that can be expanded to include multiple locations. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Tina, appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay, eight Bravo, updates and follow-up on Immaculate Conception Catholic Church regarding parking utilities in a meeting. So folks, I just wanted to put this on there, just so we had proper communication, proper follow-ups, and kind of get a game plan of who's handling which item and how quickly we can get those done, and in some cases, how quickly we can't get them done. You know, Richard, I know you had looked into the parking scenario, any kind of update there, or
I haven't, I sent you that information, did you have a chance to look at that?
Yeah, Richard sent me a screenshot of two thousand eighteen international zoning code chart, and I found where in the building codes, we have building and buildings and building regulations, I found where under building code, it said international building I found where under building code, it said international building code, and appendix says two thousand edition is adopted. And I pulled up the two thousand building code, and it doesn't mention anything about number of parking spaces required. It, it just talks about the amount of accessible handicap parking spaces that are required. That's all that was in there. So, I feel like it's, it's on the city to find, you know, if you deny a permit on parking spaces required, it's on the city council to have that information available so you can deny a permit. Okay? So, you know, I hope that can be made public. If it's in here, where? Where is it? And where does it refer to? The international zoning code of two thousand eighteen that it applies to our building codes? I've got another, chapter one oh two in ordinance's zoning. The city is a general law city without a comprehensive zoning plan. Then it goes on to, to mention a general retail district that is south and east of the Big Cypress Bayou, strictly zoned for retail. So, that's on the other side.
South and east?
Of the river, south and east, as a general retail district, and there are restrictions on what can be built on that property, which is inside city limits, by the way. That's kind of a question that's come up. And then, it talks about a single-family residential district, and that is basically Cedarwood North, that can only have single-family residential property. And then it gives restrictions on what can be built in that zone. And then there's an ordinance on, for, just a residential, not necessarily single, it's just residential district, and that zoned area is pretty much there in Frog Town. So, there aren't any other zoned areas that the ordinances I've found refer to. So, you know, it's up to the city to, in essence, prove what is required. I mean, you can't say, oh, I think so, or I believe it is. There better be something in writing that you can point to. I mean, Jeffersonian Institute, how much parking did they build? They use on-street parking totally. So if the ordinance wasn't there when they built it, how do we know? How do we know it wasn't just built without anyone questioning it?
Okay. So in summary, the city owes a follow-up on international building code and how it applies to this specific building.
Right. In writing.
Of course.
And soon.
Let's talk, well, let's talk about the soon in just a minute.
I'm sorry?
Let's talk about the soon in just a minute. We're gonna do this as, as quickly as we can.
Well, the building permit will be coming forward again, and when it comes, you all will have noticed. So at that point, if you don't provide and you, you table it or deny it, then, you know, that, that doesn't look good.
It doesn't look good. Okay. Well, there's, we're gonna handle this as best we can, as quickly as we can, just like we do everything else. No one's, no one's tapping the brakes on this.
Okay, but it's on the agenda, and we don't have any more information than we had last week, last meeting. So why is it on the agenda for an update if there's nothing to update?
We brought it up last time and tabled it, and since then, we've lost the city administrator, which might've helped us do some of this reconnaissance. I'm just trying to make sure we at this table take the right actions from the questions that came up in that session. We didn't walk away from there saying, you've got this issue, you've got this issue, you've got that issue. We can talk utilities. I mean, we've got a, a fire suppression system that's gonna be here in this, in this facility. We've got to know whether our water system and our sewer system for, for building that size is conducive for those systems. You guys know, I don't know anything about engineering, but I know we probably need an engineering study to see if our systems, plural, have the capacity. Do we need a lift station? Do we have the right, you know, water pressure in that area to add a facility? I don't know the answer to that, but we're gonna have to get an engineering study. That's gonna cost money. Is the city gonna pay for that, or is the church gonna pay for that?
An engineering study to, to take care of two bathrooms?
Well, I don't know. We haven't seen a detailed engineering package. We saw eight, eight and a half by eleven pictures of schematics. I'm not an engineer, I, you know, I'm looking at that, and I saw a basketball court and a couple bathrooms.
Has, has, has the water and sewer infrastructure in that area been, hasn't that been upgraded because of our big upgrade plan? I, I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
I don't know.
Alan?
So.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
So if anything, I think we need to get, you know, I'll say SBI to take a look and give us the right clearance for whatever's in the building packet, you know? I think we need a proper building packet from, I guess, the architect, I don't know, to be able to give to SBI, so SBI can do that study and give us a thumbs up or words of caution. I'm not saying there are words of caution, I just don't know.
So this council's pretty much done nothing since our last meeting on these two questions?
I, I personally have not. So let's talk about the meeting.
The meeting is none of your business.
Really?
Really.
The meeting is none of my business. So, in the words of transparency for this city, this is the most untransparent thing I've ever seen.
Private property can be, you can build on private property what you want to build. And the city can't require any type of meeting in order to, to pass a building permit. You can't do that. That's not lawful.
And lawful, lawful or ethical is what we're talking about here. We need some, the citizens are demanding some input in the architecture and the general scope of this project. That's all they're asking. I haven't talked to one person, I haven't heard one group, I have not seen one article that anyone doesn't want something built there. Because this is, there, there's a true value in putting something there.
Right, but again.
But, but the question has been.
It's, it's not, it's not the city's business, it's not the citizens'.
City's business is to give building permits.
So you would deny a building permit if we don't have a meeting with citizens? Is that what you're telling me?
I'm saying, you guys heard, the citizens want input. The citizens want to be.
Well, where, where was the, the neighborly question when the, the ambulance went in right across the street from the church? Did they come and ask us what we thought about it?
You'd have to ask that mayor and that council.
And the council agreed and, and passed a building permit for him, if he got one, I guess.
Okay.
I'm just saying, y'all are overstepping your bounds. You can't deny a building permit.
We're not overstepping our bounds by asking the question. We haven't denied anything. We tabled it once. We're trying to, this, this is a discussion topic tonight to see who at this table has actions to go forward with, because we did not leave the last meeting with specific actions other than, the city'll have to look into this or that. In between there, you've sent us what I, what I consider an inappropriate email saying the church is gonna have a meeting with two of the opposing people present, won't be televised, won't get input from the public, won't be, won't be a public meeting.
It won't be.
I, I find it tough to support a building permit when there's not transparency. You have said nothing but transparent stuff for the last two years that I know of, and this is the most untransparent thing I've ever seen.
All of a sudden, we want transparency when it's a church, a Catholic church in the middle of downtown, that has a very diverse congregation, and there's been talk about it in our parish, that people have asked me, is there some discrimination going on here? I said, well, I didn't, I didn't pick that up, but they think there is. They think they see the people there, sitting on their little swings, watching, they see the congregation that gathers, and they don't like it. So, you know, a lot of that could come into play, too. I'm just saying, this council better have a good reason to deny a building permit for the Catholic church on that property that we own and we have a right to build on. There better be legitimate, not, not postponement after postponement. We've got enough invested in this project that we're, we're not going to be put off.
It's been tabled once, Robin.
But the way you talk is, oh, well, you know, until you're satisfied, it could be postponed. If you don't work on it, it could be postponed.
Just trying to throw out the fact that the, that the small meeting, that's not gonna be public, not gonna get public input, I think that's inappropriate. That's all I've said.
This is not a public forum.
I've said we need an engineering study on the utilities. We'll go forward and do an, we'll, we'll go forward and look into the engineering study, but this council would have to approve money for that engineering study unless the church wants to pay for it.
You mean, our engineer, who has worked for us on numerous things, he couldn't tell us right away what could go in that.
He might be able to.
Place.
He might be able to.
Well, I'm just telling you, this council needs to come forth with what we can and can't do, so we can move forward. And we're gonna have the meeting of our choice, and it's not gonna be a circus like this council turns into. And it's not gonna be, we're gonna hear, they, they need to send their people, the ones that can express their view, and then we'll have two people there that think it's okay, what we're building. Okay? So, and then our congregation will talk about it, and we'll discuss it, and we'll move forward from there. But it's inappropriate for you to say you must have a meeting and it must be an open forum. That's up to us. Our meeting is up to us.
I didn't say must. I said, I think it's inappropriate for you not to.
Well, I think there are a lot of things that have gone on in this city that are inappropriate and.
Okay. So let me remind you and David that you're recused from the discussion, not this discussion, this is a discussion item. But when we come to further meetings with any kind of public comment, there's no words, there's no comment from you. When we discuss the actual approval of the building permit, you're recused, recused from all discussion.
That's fine.
I just wanna, I just wanna remind everybody.
That's fine.
That's, we, we let that go a little bit in the last meeting, and I got lots of feedback that y'all were not supposed to say a word. And we've had a pretty open council, and I think that's good to have an open council.
You can ask questions to people making comment, public comments. You can ask questions.
You've now been recused from the vote, though. You cannot, you cannot.
I'm not, I'm not planning on voting.
Understand. Any other comments?
The only thing that I would say about all this is, you know, anybody that submits a building permit has to submit certain information, schematics, drawings, et cetera. And I don't, you know, I, I, I would just say that, you know, whatever, and I understand the public wants to have some input on, on something, it's a big project, but, you know, we shouldn't require them to jump through any more hoops than we require Dollar General to put up their store on fifty-nine. And I'm not saying that's happening, I'm just saying, in, in terms of, you know, compliance with what we require from people, you know, to, to get a building permit, the electron, electric specifications and the other infrastructure specification, I mean, I, I just think, you know, that's all I have to say about it.
Any other comments? Okay, on to eight Charlie, clarification of the allowable use requirements of off-road vehicles and golf carts. So Robin, you had brought this up of something that I said in the last council meeting that you want me to clarify. Can you just remind us of what it, what it is?
Well, you mentioned to.
Francine.
Francine, yes, I'm sorry. That all that was required of vehicles that would be coming in for the event, event vehicles that come into the city, would be just that they have insurance.
If it, if it's an event in the city, yes. They only have one event, I believe, that's in the city, I think that's the tractor show.
Well, I thought our ordinance said that the ATVs had to be registered. I mean, that's what Tammy Smith went through ad nauseam on hers.
But we also said that if they're having an event, they could have, you know, a display that allowed event vehicles to be ridden, they'd still be insured, but the whole registration is gonna have to be, it's not gonna be the state registration to get the license plate. It is gonna be, you know, let's say it's the, the crew. The crew will have an event where they say, we've rented twenty golf carts, and here are the twenty people, they're all insured, and here's, here's who's riding them. I mean, to me, that's what should be registered for those vehicles for that event.
Well, our, our ordinance that we just passed doesn't say that.
Well, I don't think the ordinance we just passed addressed the guest vehicles. I mean, for Francine's, she's only having the one event in the city limits.
I think it said any.
But we can't do anything about events that are not in city limits.
No, no. And that's not what we're talking about. You told her event vehicles could come as long as they're insured.
And so, events in the city, yes.
Well, that, isn't that what we're talking about? Events in the city?
Well, I don't know, you brought it up.
Her event vehicles that come to town, even if the events aren't in the city, she says her event vehicles may come to town.
So our ordinance says any city council-approved event, those are in-city events. We don't approve the rest of their events, they're on private property. If she has vehicles that come from elsewhere on those weekends, if they're golf carts and they're insured, they can drive on the streets. If they're not golf carts, they can't drive on the street. Those events are not city-approved events. She only has one city-approved event. And for those, if they have some events or some event vehicles that need to be, hey, event vehicle, they can display those, still have to be insured.
So ATVs, like side-by-sides, to drive on the city streets, don't have to be registered with tags?
Again, if it's an event on her property, she can have visiting golf carts come, but the side-by-sides, for those events, they're not a city-approved event. We're not approving her events on her private property.
That is not what you said at the meeting that I presented my schedule of events.
Okay.
You said, if they have insurance, because I asked specifically about that, it was on the paper that I gave you, and, and I, that's what you said. If they have insurance, and I walked off. That is my understanding. There's no difference in one of my guests who has insurance driving a side-by-side than Tammy Smith driving one. And you're gonna hurt attendance at these events.
Well, except Tammy Smith falls under the.
The business.
Files with the police report, or with the police department, is running a business.
I know, but these are guests that come in for the weekend, we've been having this discussion for more than a year, and you are going to hurt my events, and you are going to hurt every business in downtown Jefferson, that these side-by-sides come into town and they eat, and they spend thousands and thousands of dollars in the stores and in the restaurants. And if you say they cannot come into town, they won't come to Jefferson.
So, sounds like another kick at the can for the ordinance, because I don't know what to tell you.
Well, it's pretty clear. All vehicles driven on city streets, including such off-road vehicles described in section one, must, A, carry evidence of one hundred thousand bodily injury and property damage liability insurance, which does not specifically exclude coverage for use on city streets, and/or does not exclude coverage while vehicle is being used in the operation of a business. operation of a business. Golf carts means a motor vehicle designed by the manufacturer primarily for transporting persons on a golf cart. This ordinance, I don't know if it hasn't been updated, but it just says, "Golf cart, 100,000 per occurrence." It doesn't mention, but I think that's something that Roy Ritchie in his term brought forth, and it was approved about the licensing, because he licenses all his golf carts now. And I think that was something that he brought forth. I mean, it's pretty clear. And this is a brand-new, we just updated it when? 2022.
So, I think we need clarity. Any other comments?
The only thing I'll say is that when, say, the crew rents vehicles, golf carts for our event, we can't register it because we don't own them. We rent them. And it's only for that event. Our insurance covers that, but to, to have to register and get a, I mean, most of these come from Louisiana. They're not going to want to register and put a Texas tag on it, so.
But those are golf carts. Do you?
Right.
Do y'all rent side-by-sides?
We don't rent side-by-sides, no.
Do any of your people drive side-by-sides?
Some, yes.
And they're tagged and?
Yes. I mean, they're, they do it just like they do anything else, you know.
You know, it's just like any other ordinance. We either need to have an ordinance or get rid of an ordinance.
Well, I think this one needs to be supplemented, because I think we didn't address the, the guest golf carts in a non-city event. We specifically put something in place for city, city council-approved events.
Well, and just normal people that drive their golf carts around?
Well, normal people have to register them. They fall under the regular golf cart ordinance. Their residence is here, they have to register them, they have to have plates, all the horn, the rearview mirrors, the lights, and insurance.
So maybe amend it for events that use them for that event only, amend it just to say liability only for those golf carts? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, if it's a, we've only addressed city council events. We have not addressed events that are not approved by the city council. Yes, ma'am?
This particular issue came up with some of my campers recently, that just came to town for the weekend. It wasn't an event weekend. They just wanted to come and shop and drive around. They're in a little motor home. They wanted to bring their golf cart. Wanted to know if that was possible. I said, "You need insurance on it, you need a slow-moving decal on it, and you should have it registered according to our city ordinance," this is my understanding, "you should have it registered with the state." They didn't have a problem with the insurance, they didn't have a problem with the slow-moving decal. They had just bought it, they hadn't had a chance to go and get it tagged. So, they didn't bring their golf cart. They rented one from Roy's until they could, such time as they could get it tagged. The question I have, as, as an RV park owner, what do I tell my campers that are coming in on a non-event weekend versus and/or an event weekend about their golf carts and/or their side-by-sides? I've had them ask me about side-by-sides. I've told them that unless it's an event weekend, they ought to call the chief of police or call the police department and, and talk to them about it, because I don't want to tell them something that's going to get them in trouble with the police department if they're not following all of the guidelines. I've told them, we've had large discussions about this with city council, but that they definitely should have slow-moving decal on it. They definitely have to have their insurance on it. My suggestion, I brought this up earlier, a few months back, possibly have a $5 or $10 permit fee that they get from the police department prior to coming to town, instead of having, if they're not local, or, you know, or they're from out of state or something, to where they can have an event tag from the city. So if they don't have their vehicle, their, their side-by-side or their golf cart registered with their, with the state, this state or any other state. But, I mean, we need to be able to tell guests coming in what, what is okay and what's not, to keep them from getting, you know, running crosswires with the city.
Okay. Thanks, Tammy.
And what I understand, too, Tammy, is if you don't have it street legal on, on a side-by-side, you don't have insurance.
Well, and that's, and I tell them now on the side-by-side. I'm like, I said, you know, "You're welcome to call the police department and talk to them about the city ordinance and what it says." They know that I ride one during events, and I tell them, I said, "I'm, I'm, I follow the business deal. I'm providing a service to the businesses and vendors and stuff in town. But golf carts are okay, you know, as long as you've got your insurance and you've got your slow-moving decal. It's preferred that it be registered." But again, I tell them to call the police department, because I don't want to tell them something, and then them get here and get pulled over and given a ticket, or have it and pound it or something like that.
Well, and if, if the city council and the mayor aren't sure what an ordinance means, how does the, how do the citizens figure it out? So.
Okay, thanks, Tammy. Appreciate it. Okay, folks, we're going to retire to executive after a short bio, nine, under nine alpha, section 551.071, and we'll be back as soon as we can. Hugh, you got all those?